June 11th. It's our second town hall this week. We did have an extra town hall on Tuesday with the primary topic being police. And first, I just wanted to announce that we hosted at very short notice today, a sort of a pop-up testing center. We got a call out from the county yesterday asking if we could put together a site. And our teammates were able to quickly work with the county. And so at the council chamber today, the county set up with our help in checking people in. They had capacity for testing of 350 individuals. And we haven't got the final numbers, but it looks like we got just about 350. And so we pushed this information out. And I know some of you on this call, both panelists and attendees helped push out the information through social media and through our different networks. And we got, you know, all the different groups to push it out. And so got a lot of tests in Morgan Hill, which is, you know, really the goal is to get as many people tested as possible, free of charge, no appointment necessary. And you don't, you don't need symptoms. You don't have to be, you know, in a certain work line to do it. But everybody was, was encouraged to get tested. And so I believe today was a success. And so tonight, what we are going to focus this town hall on is the Hale Avenue Extension. This is a project that's been in the making for many, many years. And Chris Gioni, our Public Services Director, is going to walk us through the history with this project, where we've been and where we're going. And without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Chris. And Chris is sharing his screen.
Chris, you're muted just a second.
His screen, but not his microphone. I'll get there. I gotta find the little button, sorry. Okay, screen look right to everybody?
Yes.
All right. So as Christina mentioned, we're going to talk about the Hale Avenue Extension project. And I will do a little bit of talking on the background, but also want to leave time for questions if people have them. This is a very long project in the making. And the first thing I'd like to talk about is when we talk about this project, we really have two separate phases. And what we primarily are talking about most often is what we have in the city limits in Morgan Hill, which is Phase One, which you can see on the map that I have up on the screen, really starts at Main Avenue and ends at DeWitt Avenue. So that is Phase One. But there is a second part that, that is Phase Two. And that second part also realigns DeWitt Avenue with Sunnyside Avenue near Edmondson. And that section of the roadway is actually in the county. When, when the city approved the EIR and the plan line for this extension, both areas were looked at. So there's a plan line that goes through, through Phase Two. But that is not being funded and moving forward right now. So just Phase One. And as you can see, Phase Two is probably about a quarter of the size of Phase One. So when we look at Phase One of the Hale Avenue Extension, as I mentioned, starting at Main Avenue, green circle you see on the screen, where the roadway would start, the new roadway would start kind of right next to the PG&E substation. There would be a traffic signal that goes in there as part of this project. And then the roadway would actually continue down to West Dunn Avenue, where you see the orange circle, where the, the new roadway would cross West Dunn and a roundabout will, will be constructed. And then ultimately ending at Spring Avenue and aligning with DeWitt. So the new extension will become the primary roadway connecting through to DeWitt to the south, with DeWitt to the north coming in at basically like a 90-degree angle as a new intersection of the continuous roadway, which will be the Hale Avenue Extension. So we are estimating that we will get this project started in the fall. And it will take almost two years through the summer of 2022. And part of the reason for that is a big portion of the project, if you can see this red circle, is, is really connected and integrated with the Valley Waters Upper Yaugus Creek Flood Control Project. And so they are actually doing, will be doing a whole bunch of work also starting this fall and really ramping up next summer to fix, to improve flood control in our town, which includes a big, really big tunnel under Knob Hill that could, that will basically allow the water to bypass downtown and, and not flood anything down there. And they'll also be doing a lot of work at the Main and Hale intersections. So that's why these two projects really overlap and are going to be coordinated when we work on them and get them underway. So this is another view of the, of the Hale Avenue Extension that you can kind of just see this. And, and you can kind of see, so over here on the south side, this is what I mentioned earlier, which is where DeWitt will kind of end, but then connect into the new roadway. And you can see the new roadway that goes through to connect with the new version of DeWitt. So you can see how it'll swing south. And then here's where the roundabout will be at done. And you could kind of see how that will work and fit into the space there. And then the intersection over at Main on, on the right side, which is the north side. And this is just a rendering of what the roundabout at Dunn Avenue would look like. This is kind of if you were on the new roadway facing north. This is what you would look towards and see. So a lot of questions we've got as we move forward with this project is why? Why is this, has the city been pursuing this project? And before the city, the county, why has this been pursued for so many years? And really, the goals of the project are to create a two-lane multimodal arterial street in line with complete streets, the complete streets approach to roadway planning and is consistent with the city's general plan. So it will provide another continuous north-south route on the west side of the city and really take a lot of traffic off of some of our neighborhood streets in that area. It will provide another alternate north-south road option on the, the west side of 101 and relieve congestion on Monterey Road as well. And as I mentioned, in line with complete streets, there'll be a Class One bike and pedestrian trail, the length of the roadway adjacent to the road. And that's, a Class One trail is separated from the roadway, like our West Little Yaugus Creek Trail, similar to that. So that, that's a big bike and pet improvement for us. And then really, it will reduce energy consumption by providing an efficient multimodal roadway that will go through the town where people aren't having to stop and start at every stop signs. With this, a new arterial street, there are almost no driveways fronting the roadway. So it'll be a, it'll be different than the people passing through the residential streets now, where if you're, if you're coming down Hale Avenue and you are intending to end up at DeWitt Avenue, you're going to be stopping at right, turning right, stopping again at Peak, turning left on Peak, going through several stop signs, turning right on Dunn, and then going down to another stopway and turning, stop sign and turning left on DeWitt. So, so that's, that's a big win of the project as well. So we get a lot of questions on traffic and has traffic been studied? And yes, it has multiple times through the project. So the project will reduce traffic on Monterey Road as well as the residential streets, as I mentioned. And this has been seen in several studies. There was an original study done in 2010 that really looked at how the impacts on the side streets were, would, would, what would, what would occur? And that was done as part of the update to the general plan and circulation element in that time. And then when the, the city finished the environmental impact report in 2017, the traffic study was done again and verified the same results. And then in 2019, we did a cut-through traffic study on the city and we asked for, for it to be somewhat validated again, that this would help reduce traffic on the side streets and Monterey Road. And this is just kind of a graphical representation of this. This is from the cut-through traffic study. And I will say, this diagram takes into account the city potentially installing Hale, the Hale Avenue Extension, as well as improving citywide signal coordination. But you can see the areas in, in red, in orange are the, the areas where the volume of traffic would increase. So if you see this big orange area right in here, that's the new roadway. So obviously, the traffic is gonna, the, the volume of traffic is going to increase there because there's no traffic right now because there's no roadway. But then you can see right here on, this is right, as well as, you know, Peak over here, that traffic will be reduced. And then the same thing you see over here on the right side on Monterey Road, you'll see a reduction in traffic as well. And then funding for the project, how will this project be funded? Well, the city spent about $10 million on it so far. And the money the city has spent is impact fees. And impact fees are paid by developers to improve the transportation system to accommodate new growth. And this has been in, as I said, the general plan, as well as the impact fee studies that we've done. So this money has been spent on acquisition, design, and the environmental work to get the roadway ready to be built. So we've spent that much already. We think, we believe, our cost estimates are that it, the completing the project's going to cost $16.5 million to construct. And that would be funded through the grant funds, which are really specific Measure B funds. VTA's 2000, the countywide Measure B from 2016 has an expressway program that was built into it and built into the measure. And ours, our project is one of 20 projects in that program. And the program is, is, is a program that is estimated to bring in $750 million over the 30-year life of the measure. But it's real important that, that we're upfront right now getting our project first because the, the first round, the first two-year round of funding was for $50 million. And, and we were able to get in that because our project is near shovel-ready and received the $16.5 million. And it's important because that $750 million over 30 years, we don't believe there's even close to enough to fund those 20 projects. They're going to cost much more than that. And some of the projects to the north, some of those projects are $200 million projects at a time. So if our project fell behind those, we could be waiting a decade before we got funding for this, for, for this project. So the city being ready and all the work that, you know, our elected officials have done, staff team members have done to be first in line for this, these dollars has been, has worked out really well. And we, we have a funding agreement with the VTA going forward at next week's council meeting for, for the funding. And in the last bucket, I show at the bottom, it's how much we've, we're spending from the city's general fund. And as many of you listen a lot know, that's the money that the city has a lot of this to cover, can spend to support our police officers, spend on park maintenance, those sort of things. We're not spending any of those dollars. So the dollars we spent on this project and the dollars we're getting in grant funds, we can't divert that for any other uses within the city. And I'm just going to go kind of briefly through the history. So this project is in plan since the 60s. Was originally planned as a county, a county project from the county actually ran Santa Teresa as an expressway. And then it's been in the city's general plan since 1969. So 50 years that the city has been looking at this. And then the first preliminary design began for the city in 2007, '08. And then the city hosted a number of meetings around the 2008, 2012 timeframe as the city went on planning for, for this. And then, as we've talked about before, the project got added to the general plan circulation element in 2010. And then the, the engineering, or sorry, the, through 2011, 2012, there were, as you can see, several meetings on designs of specific aspects, as well as what to do with community, some were run by staff and many meetings with the city council.
Excuse me, Chris, you're having some issues with your audio again.
Hang on one sec. Okay, let me try it now. Am I any better?
It sounds better in this moment.
Okay. So I'll be, I'll be pretty quick. The project at that time was going to be funded by the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency was taken away from the city in 2013 and the project was temporarily halted. In 2017, with the, the planning for, with, with Measure B, the, the city began moving forward quickly and completed the environmental impact report in 2017. And then you can see on this page, the city went on to purchase a number of properties and receive property from the county to prepare the city where we, for where we are today, which is to start construction of the project. So for that time, in the, in the last three years, we've done a significant amount of work. And now the, the project is basically shovel, shovel-ready to this point. So the next steps for the project to go forward is the city council next Wednesday is going to consider approving a funding agreement with the VTA for the $16.5 million. And then the city would move forward to bid the project this summer. And then the council, final council action would be to award the project. And they will consider that in the fall and then project commencement by late fall. And that really ends, ends any, my presentation. Be happy to take questions at this point.
Thank you, Chris. So we can either do questions, you can write them in, in your Q and A section, or you can go ahead and raise your hand. In addition to that, if you're calling in, you can dial star nine and that will allow you to raise your hand. And so with that, we have our first question from Steve Chappelle. He says, hi, number one, wasn't the original plan to extend to Sunnyside? Two, what is the possibility of cost overruns beyond the $25 million planned? And if so, where will those funds come from? And then three, what will the speed limit be on the extension? So taking them one at a time, wasn't the original plan to extend to Sunnyside?
Yes, and that still is the plan. As the, I showed in the, the first slide, it might've been early, there's two phases. So it will connect to DeWitt. And then the second phase is a much smaller phase that realigns DeWitt to Sunnyside. So that is correct. That is still the plan, but only Phase One is being funded at this point. And then the second question was the speed limit?
The third, that's fine, yeah. What is the speed limit on the extension?
We believe, I believe it's 45 miles an hour. I'll have to, I'll have to double-check that. That's what we discussed, yep.
And then the other question has to do is, is it possible that there could be cost overruns beyond $25 million? And if so, where would that funding come from?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so we, we had actually planned to fund an additional $2 million, primarily from traffic impact fees, because we did not believe VTA was going to give us a $16.5 million. So we would be able to fund that from the traffic impact fees if we, if we had to. We also have, it's, there's improvements relating to our storm drain system. And so there also is our funds in there to improve some of the storm drain system. And those would all be impact fee funds that we've accounted for to plan for this project. So there would be some additional funding if there are cost overruns. The way it works for us is we'll bid the project. So the cost overruns and the, and we would, we would set up a contingency. It's usually about 10% of the project. So really, cost overruns could be a factor, but the bigger factor is what we bid this project for and if it comes in at the $16.5 million. But we are now at, at a good point for bidding. And we believe we have a real good opportunity to bid the project and, and get that pricing.
Great. Question from Sean Voss. Is my understanding correct that the funding has been secured from the VTA in its entirety?
The, the VTA board has approved the allocation of the funding and the city council next Wednesday would approve the funding agreement. So once that funding agreement is approved by the city council, then the funding will be complete.
Thank you. And then from Steve Chappelle. Will any type of sound walling be installed for the residents who live adjacent to the new roadway?
Yes. There will be, there will be walls on, on both sides. And that's within the plan and in, within the budget.
Okay. And from Sean, do you intend to eminent domain the $9 million in properties to make Phase Two physically possible?
So that would be a county, a county conversation. We have not got into that. When you look at the, the, the portion for Phase Two, it's a very, very small portion and there's already a plan line there. So there's no houses in the line of Phase Two that would be removed, but there is property. The county actually owns a big swath of that property already. It's on the corner of Edmondson and Sunnyside. That's where the roundabout would take place and the realignment. So some of that property is already owned and there's a couple other parcels that would have to be acquired. And I would say, we did not use eminent domain on any properties within the city except for the PG&E property. And that had to do with our ability to move forward and, and make a transaction due to their bankruptcy. It wasn't because we just wanted to take it. They were having administrative difficulty on the transfer of the property.
Okay. Michelle, we have Wayne Roten that has his hand up. And while we're unmuting him or, or getting him to be able to talk, his question that's typed out is, since this is part of the county expressway system and this road is named Santa Teresa Expressway, north of Hale and south of Morgan Hill, will Hale, DeWitt, and Spring be renamed to Santa Teresa Expressway?
We don't believe so right now. Our, the roadways within the city system use the city's naming convention, so we have not discussed this. We are kind of a pseudo-expressway. Many, many years ago, the road was actually owned by the county. But now, within the city limits of Gilroy and Morgan Hill, the sections of roadway that were owned by the county, now that they're within the cities, are now owned by the city. So the city, the same thing in San Jose. So the cities now own it. So we're kind of a pseudo-expressway, different than, say, Capitol Expressway, which is owned and, owned and operated by the county. So they've funded us as an expressway, but we're not like in this program, but we're not an actual expressway any longer.
Wayne, you're unmuted. Do you have any additional questions or comments?
Just an observation that it's my understanding that 40 years ago, the plan was for Santa Teresa Expressway, north of Morgan Hill, to be four lanes, to be expanded from two to four lanes, which would imply that, you know, they'd like it all the way to Gilroy. So I assume that, according to what Chris just said, that plan is no longer enforced. It'll stay, they planned it to be indefinitely two-lane.
That, that's a, that's, that's the city's plan moving forward and that's what's been approved by the city. And we did not secure all the right-of-way through the city to expand it to four lanes at this point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. We have an anonymous question. Is there a reason that the city wouldn't proceed with the project now? Don't you have all the money and plans and bought the homes and everything? What is planned to control the traffic on Santa Teresa and Hale, which is bad right now?
So the plan to control the traffic, the amount of traffic on Santa Teresa and Hale? I, I mean, maybe is there clarification? I guess the, the, the whole kind of corridor, from the city's perspective, this is Phase One, then there would be the opportunity for additional traffic control or traffic management measures to occur up and down the expressway on both the north and south sides, or not the expressway, our roadway, our arterial street, which is not an expressway, sorry, which could include additional roundabouts or traffic signals at different intersections. But that would, those would come in future phases.
Okay. And then the first part of that is that, is there a reason why we're not proceeding right now? We have the money and the plans and we, you know, have, have bought the, the homes and the property. So you wanted to summarize, you know, the, the process so that we, you know, can get going?
Yeah, we're, we are proceeding right now. And so what we've been working on is a funding agreement with the VTA and ensuring we got $16.5 million instead of a slightly lower amount that they were initially proposing. So we're doing that. And then we, we have just about finished the designs and are working with, I mentioned, the Valley Water to complete those and complete the staging of construction. And then we'd be moving ahead to bid. So we, we are, we are moving forward at this point and will be seeking the council's approval to do that.
And then a follow-up to that from Juan Munios Morris is, hello, is there a possibility to add a roundabout at Hale and Tilton at that intersection? This is currently a bottleneck and a roundabout would greatly improve traffic flow.
That is definitely a possibility and a roundabout or a signal, definitely a possibility. And that would be one of the intersections I, I mentioned previously that we would be looking at once this is completed as a next step, as well as, as our, our community is aware, the intersection at Watsonville and Sunnyside is another intersection within the city and Wright and Hale as well.
Okay, from Steve Chappelle. What are the post-construction costs the city, after this project is over, to maintain this new roadway for the following 10 to 20 years?
Yeah, so the, if, we believe we're going to be able to, to, if, on our arterial streets, which we're getting up to speed, thanks to our, getting up to, and a place where they can be maintained without major reconstruction, because the last few years, we've done a lot of work on our arterial streets and rehab. And then if we have the funding for our arterial streets, which we believe we will, they would require sealing every, every so often. And our newer streets will last for many, many years. So, so we would have a program of, you know, five, between five and 10 years, that the roadway would begin to be resealed and restriped. And, and that's, you know, could be $100,000 or so during that time. Each time you're doing that, that would be done as part of our pavement rehabilitation program for our arterial streets. Then we would have our ongoing maintenance for kind of the landscaping and the sound walls that is neck, are there next to the roadways, which initially will be minimal and then grow as this, as the, the city grows. And that would be absorbed by the city in the, within the city's street maintenance budget. And we anticipate that to initially be thousands and could grow into tens of, tens of thousands at a, at a, at a later date. It would, it is also important to note that we spend a significant amount of money. We will be spending a significant amount of money if we don't build the street because we now have basically open space that we have to maintain as well. So we already have maintenance costs associated with the property as well.
Okay, from Sean Voss. Since Phase Two is not going to happen soon, if honestly at all, how will the city handle the bottleneck traffic at Edmondson for the next several years?
So we, so that is a county intersection. We've talked regularly with the county. We don't believe there will be bottleneck traffic there. We believe that there will be traffic. And I can, I can kind of show, if I can pull up my screen really quick again, might be helpful. Does that look okay? My screen showing correctly?
Yes.
I'm going to get to the spot. So when we look here, you can kind of see in this area, I'm drawing the alignment from DeWitt to Edmondson right now, that currently exists in red. Sorry, it's not straight hard to draw with my mouse. But so this is the savings that we'd have. So although this, this improvement will be important for traffic flow and traffic safety, it's, it's going to be a stop sign here with people turning left. And it's a three-way stop right now, so that the intersection won't be as efficient as this would become with the roundabout here. But it's not an inefficient roadway and there's not a significant amount, a significant, significant enough amount of traffic to cause a major problem there. So we believe that the roadway will be able to handle it. And then the future phase will, will fix it for the long term.
Great, thank you, Chris. I don't see any questions in the queue. I don't see any hands up, so please go ahead and raise your hand or type in your question. We can also address any non-Hale Avenue Extension questions or comments that this group has as well this evening.
No more questions?
I don't think so, Chris. I don't think so.
Can we, we can give, we can give people a plug that the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center, with permission from the county, is opening on Monday, the 15th, or in alignment with the county's updated order for lap swimming and aqua fitness classes. So we're excited for that.
Thank you, Chris. Two questions came in, one from Alan. What's the future of Monterey Butterfield?
So I, I think I need some clarification.
Yeah. Alan, do you mind typing in a little bit more about what your? Yeah, Alan, do you mind typing in a little bit more about what you're specifically asking about? Like if if there's improvements planned in that area in the near future? And while you do that, the anonymous question, this road will be built then? Question mark.
There the the city council has has approvals that I mentioned. They would approve the funding agreement and then approve aborting the agreement. But it is our intention to to build the roadway. It's in the city's general plan and we've been working at it for the last decade plus.
And from Lori, will traffic, will truck traffic be restricted on Hale Avenue extension?
It 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 will not be a truck route and 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 there's there there will be trucks on it, but it will not be the truck route through through the city of Morgan Hill.
Okay, and then we got a clarification from Alan. When will an extension from Monterey Highway north of Cochrane be connected to Butterfield?
Okay, so that that is a tough question. And and there has been some talk in our in in our previous circulation element about the Butterfield extending up really to Madrone Parkway. But that's a difficult task. And then pass there, like any alignment is outside of our plan and is very difficult. So we have, we have no timeframe on on that extension. And what we have tried to do is just make the movement from Monterey South left onto Cochrane, right onto Butterfield more efficient. And then the same thing in the reverse direction. So that really is the the designated path for this foreseeable future.
Great. And then Jim Sergi, north end of Butterfield is ever going over the railroad tracks as promised? I think that's just a comment.
I haven't tell Jim to stay tuned for our discussion on high speed rail.
Right.
Yeah, so high speed rail, we go back next week to the council. We're working on our comment letter to the High Speed Rail Authority in response to their environmental impact report. Okay, any other Hale Avenue extension questions or comments or anything else for that matter? If not, our upcoming meetings are next Wednesday, city council meeting. And that meeting is the meeting at which we will bring forward our recommended budget to the city council for the upcoming two years. In addition to that, we will have our town hall next Thursday, which is a continuation of our police discussion. And it looks like Juan has asked a question. How does this Hale Avenue extension impact the 68 bus ridership route? Does VTA anticipate an increase in ridership for this route due to the extension?
I I'd have to ask VTA. I don't, I don't, I don't. We haven't, VTA is very involved in funding the project, but we really have not discussed any of those type of impacts.
Thank you, Chris.
I could follow up.
Okay. Okay, well, with that, thank you so much for joining us. And hopefully you'll join us at the council meeting on Wednesday and the town hall next Thursday. Have a great evening. Bye.